Uh.
We convene.
Thank you, all in favor? Thank you very much, and supper was great, thank you.
Yes.
All right, so we're going to look at seven A. Planning session date. As you could see from the information given to us by AUMA, they're not so hundred percent sure what that AUMA will look like, if it will be as normal or if it's going to be virtual. So meanwhile, we need to start to put the planning session date and fix that, so administration can start to do that. So the AUMA is normally September twenty-third to twenty-fifth, which mean that's the day before, if that's what we are interested to do still, is a date we could be aiming for, which would be September the twenty-second, which would be a Monday. Tuesday, sorry, would be a Tuesday. So are we okay with tentatively putting that date down so administration can start preparing for it?
Works for me.
Are we okay?
Work would be okay?
Would that be okay?
I'll make it work.
Yeah.
All right, so, thank you. So might be, maybe that gives you enough time to kind of rearrange your schedules.
September twenty-first?
Twenty-second.
And that could be here as opposed to there?
Exactly. I mean, the detail will be work a little bit later. We're not hundred percent sure what it would look like, so essentially we need to prepare.
And then just on that, do you want to just be here? Or do you want to be just in another building but in the area? Do you have a preference?
Top Banff.
We're at the museum.
No, I'm just kidding. Can't, can't go whitefish.
Yeah, yeah.
No, we can't.
Well, maybe, maybe by then you. I'm doubtful.
What date, twenty-second?
Twenty-second Tuesday. It's when we'd normally do it. So if we just do it that day either way, that's great.
We can cross the border of volunteer to have it at our cabin.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Would it be essential if it was a work retreat? I don't know.
Yes.
So do we want to go, you know, to Mountain View? Do we want to just be next door here? Do we just want to be in here where we can work?
You don't want it next door, no.
Essentially, what we need to remember, we need enough space to have space between us.
Yeah.
And. The museum's not a good spot for that.
No, no.
Yeah, it's fine.
We've got it configured now.
Here.
If we're not leaving town, this is probably the best place.
Work.
Well, that has space.
And we don't have to pay for it.
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
Where are you going to put us up, at the South Country?
Warren's B and B is where you're staying.
There we go.
All right, thank you. On the seven B, we have the golf course management. It's a discussion of different options for the future. Jeff, would you please help us?
Um, so we currently have a contract that expires for a manager there in October. I'd like to get something out in August to entertain what the management of the golf course looks like in upcoming years. Uh, even in your time as a council, we've had management groups, and then we've had a staff member who we've shared between other admin, although we've found that's been difficult. The golf course is, excuse me, been quite consuming. And, um, so I just wanted to have some discussion. If you wanted to put out a proposal which entertained anything, so we would say, look, if you, if you want to look at a, you know, another kind of management contract, if you're a group, if you're an, whatever you are, bring us your proposal to run the course. Or do we just whittle that way down? And are we looking for a, a full-time permanent employee who runs the golf course? Or a ten-month employee is the case, maybe if we decide to do something like that. But I just wanted a little feedback, because most all of you now have seen both sides of it.
Too much of some side.
Yeah, you've seen lots of some. And I get some feedback before I put something out.
All right, so, Councillor Brown, Councillor Drew, Councillor Silk.
Um, I'm just wondering how things have been working with Alex. I mean, he's, I've always thought he was doing a good job out there. Is that something that he'd be interested in?
So I'm not going to have a public evaluation of Alex's employment here. Um, if he's interested, he can apply.
He could apply for that.
That's right. That's what I believe.
Let, let me put it this way. Someone like him, doing a similar job, doing, to run that, is kind of what, I don't want another fiasco like we've had with the group. I really don't want that to happen again.
Okay, so what you are trying to say, you're trying to say you would prefer a town employee
A manager, yeah.
that has capacity in that domain
Exactly.
to be the manager. That's what you're trying to say? But we have a manager still.
Yeah.
We have a contractor still attached to the golf course right now.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
I like that idea, though.
So just, just to consider, there are financial implications, as you recall, and I'm fairly comfortable that it's public, because I think we said it, you know, windmills contract, for example, then was forty-eight thousand bucks for the year. Um, now, we can have a great debate about the value we got for the forty-eight thousand dollars, but, okay, so there's that. Um, and, and so a full-time permanent member is a little more expensive for us, for sure. I will tell you from an administrator point of view, I don't, I, there's something nice about having the golf course very arm's length. However, it's been nice to have a staff member that I can meet with on occasion, see how it's going, kind of make sure that things are still moving along as they should. So there's upsides to both. I'm actually not opposed to any. Uh, we have had differing experiences in the past with both models.
Okay, Councillor Drew.
I guess you've kind of answered the question that I had. Is our, is our concern with, like, the workman's compensation piece? And because we have town employees, it's a little bit more expensive to run the golf course as opposed to having someone else run it for us?
So we would be able to find contracted services for cheaper than a full-time employee, but it begs the question as to what you get for it.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So, so there's value in the dollar there. I'm not debating that. Um, you know, I don't think, it's my opinion, we don't need a CPGA golf pro there. I don't think that's the case. We need someone who has some competency to manage the facility. And the rest will kind of take care of itself to some degree, to some degree. Um, you know, it's great if they have some interest and knowledge in the industry, for sure. But yes, there's some additional expenses when you start adding in your pensions and benefits and all that other stuff, for sure. But then you weigh the value of it, if it's the right person.
Okay, Councillor Silk, Councillor Brown.
I think we all know what we don't want.
Yes.
Based upon previous history.
Yeah.
In terms of contracting it out completely and/or contracting out the management of it, that's been difficult. Maybe there's a hybrid where the person is not a town employee but contracted, and they are an entity that they do it and they manage it.
Mm-hmm.
Much like we're doing this year on an ongoing basis.
Yeah, so those models, um, we have to, we approach those with caution, so we can't just make someone a contractor because they want to be a contractor. They have, there's a number of rules, we're under scrutiny. But still, um, like this year, we have a full-time temporary contract, right? And so it's, it's set up a little differently. Um, yeah, we can look at some of those hybrid type models, for sure.
Okay, Councillor.
Just a follow-up. So Jeff, you don't have to have them as a full, they can be a three-quarter time employee.
Yeah, we can negotiate, what's the compensation from February first until October fifteenth or something, right? Those types of things are certainly on the table.
Because to have a full-time manager at the golf course, there would be a period of time that's just a waste. And they would, so perhaps that's the contract, is that it's got to be three-quarter time or whatever.
Yeah, I mean, we found, we'll, I'll use, and again, I don't want to scrutinize his details, but our groundskeeper are out there. We actually ended up making that a full-time year-round contract, but the hours are loaded in the peak season.
Right.
Right, so he's a full-time permanent employee, and we, and the Employee Association granted me a number of changes in the association agreement to allow for that employee to have their hours loaded in like an eight-month period, right? So those kind of things can also, we can entertain those kind of things as well.
Councillor Brown.
Mine kind of goes along with what Councillor Silk said. So my question would be, um, how Darcy Beamer is contracted to do our recycling and garbage.
Correct.
And he is, he is not a town employee.
No, he's not.
He does not get benefits from us.
Correct.
He is a separate entity all himself.
Correct.
However, you regularly meet with him, he has problems, you talked, he talks to you, very good back and forth, correct? So there's no reason to think that we couldn't do a similar situation out at the golf course with this manager.
There's a couple of reasons to think of.
Okay, go.
Um, so under the, uh, legislation, a contractor, uh, you can't call someone a contractor under a couple of conditions. One is that they use your equipment at your facilities, and you set their schedule.
That's right.
And you would prohibit them from substituting someone else in if they can't be there. So if they can't do those things, they're an employee.
Okay.
So if they're working out of your office, and they're using your computer that you got them, and they're, you know, you expect that they check in and check out from eight-thirty to four-thirty, and they can't send their buddy to fill in for their place if they can't be there, then they're an employee. So with Darcy, for example, his equipment, he buys it. Um, he, he regularly has other people cover for him.
Yeah.
You know, if he's going on vacation or he's ill, he has other people that do it for him. And, uh, so it is a little bit different. It's, it's, there is a fine line there we just have to look at.
And so part two to that question then would be, so if in fact we hired somebody like Councillor Silk said, three-quarter time, and there is no reason to, to say you have to be here, because they're an employee, to say you have to be here between February and Oc, do, between February and October, and do we have to give you benefits? Do we have to give them benefits?
Uh, don't, well.
In fact, they're an employee.
If they are a full-time permanent, if they are a full-time permanent or a part-time permanent employee of the town, then the association agreement would say they are. But we have a very cooperative association right now, given the unique nature of the golf course. So for example, when we brought Miles on, Miles works Sundays.
Yes.
Miles works more than eight hours in a day. Miles had a whole bunch of things he didn't comply with the association agreement.
Right.
And so we met and agreed that we were going to offer golf course employees exceptions to this, 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 and this clause.
Right.
Uh, we can't violate legislation, but we, you know, things like that. So, yes, we can try and be as flexible as we can with it. Uh, and what we may or may not find, so here, here's the other side of it. So you get a proposal from someone who says, well, I would be fine to take on a nine- or ten-month contract for X dollars. I'd also be fine to work for you for twelve months for the same dollars. So take them for the twelve months and find things for them in the off-season. Right, that's, that's, if we advertise the full-time permanent position for a rate, we, we might get the same people.
And you have no preference, personally?
Um, no, if the dollars made sense, I don't necessarily have a preference, no.
Okay, Councillor Bangor, you had your hands up, and Councillor Silk.
Uh, Jeff, we, we have some employees that, like our swimming pool manager, that does things during the winter. Uh, is he a full-time employee?
Yeah, he's, 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 uh, pool, parks, and rink.
Okay, could, could you utilize another person like that?
Uh, I would not suggest we are understaffed at the rink in the winter. Is that the nicest way I could say that?
Well, I, I agree with you, but, but could you find?
Negative, but go with me on that one.
Yeah, could you find something for him to do?
Oh, there's thing, depending on their competencies, okay? So for example, and I don't want to talk too much about Miles' contract, but our agreement with Miles is, hey, are you game to be working in public works if you need to make up three hundred hours in the winter? You know, if you've got four hundred hours to reach your contract hours in the winter, what do you think about taking some custodial shifts at the rink and working in public works, doing Main Street garbages and those types of things? He says, yeah, I'd love to do it, be happy to do that. You know, no problem. So we have to evaluate, for example, his hours at the end of the golf season and say, okay, the contract is for two thousand and eighty hours, you're at sixteen hundred and fifty. He doesn't take any vacation during that time, so now he's going to take his vacation, he's going to take any overtime that's banked, he's going to do all that in the off-season. And then we're going to find, we're going to work on a plan for the off-season.
Okay, do you have a follow-up?
Yes, second question, the second part of that question, Jeff. Uh, who prepares the ice rink for the season and keeps the plant running?
Yeah, Randy and Jeff and Doug. I mean, that's their area, they know how to do that, that's their thing.
Okay.
Okay.
So we couldn't educate somebody else, just in case?
Train anybody, yeah. Again, we have good redundancy at the rink.
Okay.
Okay, Councillor Silk, Councillor, uh, Drew.
Take it over.
One of the things that they could obviously do if they're making up hours, so to speak, from what the contracted hours are, is they could market the golf course.
What is, what I was wondering?
They could market the golf course so that we have seasons like we have had this year consistently.
Yeah.
And that's an excellent point, Councillor Silk. I thought of the marketing aspect, too, and I'm thinking something happened that made it interesting this year.
Yeah, I, I can see fashioning a contract that says, okay, you're full-time permanent, but we're going to exercise the exemptions in the association contract where you stack your hours in the peak season, and if you got three, four hundred hours over the winter, we're going to see in the office two days a week from November through February, working on all the preparation for the season.
Okay.
It, it seems perfectly realistic to me.
Okay. Councillor Silk.
So I just need to ask, Jeff, with the green fee players, can, do we track where they're, do we have a contact with them?
I believe so, yeah, I believe.
Part of their marketing could be phoning them up in the off-season and saying, hey, uh, what did you think of the course? Can we see you back next year? That's.
I mean, our email list, I think, is about eleven or twelve hundred people now, you know, at the golf course. So we've, we've established a pretty good database there, too.
Perhaps they could work with the other group that's trying to get us a clubhouse from that souzier we got now.
One of the things we've, in the last, since Black Sands, every year from then, we've scrambled to be ready for every season. We're not ready in the fall. Every dang March, we're scrambling to figure out who's running the thing.
Yeah.
And we haven't had that really nice couple of months in the off-season to focus on those preparations and the marketing and laying everything out. That's always, and it's always been circumstance where somebody's left or something's happened, and so we're scrambling every year. And even, even frankly with Alex, where he'd moved on to something else, and then, you know, we, we ended up making a switch right, thankfully, we opened late because of COVID. So we had a little time, that saved our bacon. And we opened up a little bit late and were able to run in. But everything we've been doing on, we're scrambling every spring. And so, like with Miles, and I'll speak about that publicly, too, we, we've seen the value in having a permanent, full-time guy like that. And, and, and the members would, would support that. And so we're paying more for a groundskeeper at the golf course than probably we ever have. And I'm not saying it's incredibly lucrative, but it's more than we've paid in the past because we've had a seven-month groundskeeper. You know, an eight-month groundskeeper. And we may need to look at that on the management side, too.
Councillor Drew, Councillor Brown.
Yeah, I just, I just think that when, when we have control as a town, we own the property, of course, when we have control and it's our employees, I believe that it's run better.
Okay.
I think that the grounds are better, I think, and that's from previous experience with other people that have run it. But I think that, you know, whether we decide to do a contract with this person or we have a full-time, whatever, I just, I just feel like when we're doing it, it's better. And I think down the road, as we hone that a little bit and get better at it, I think it'll be even better.
Sure.
Okay, Councillor Brown.
I just wanted to say that we might be paying more, but our grounds have never been as good.
It's hard to argue with the results.
That's right.
We're consistently hearing how amazing our grounds are, how fast they're running. They're using words I don't even know what means, but apparently they're fantastic.
Sounds good, though, right?
Right?
Yeah.
Right? I'm just saying, we are, we are getting known. All of a sudden, people are talking about this golf course more than they have in years past. And that's fantastic, because that helps with prosperity of carts and economic growth and development. That's, that's, it all works together, right?
One, one other thing I'll throw out from a management, so I'm not the direct management of the course, but from my level of management of the course, is when we've, we've had a staff member who's had it for two years, our data is better for comparison purposes. So I'm much more confident in the numbers about how many rounds were played, how many memberships were sold. And it's consistent from year to year. We can't say that's the case going back two or three years, previous, right? But we've also seen some real great strides in the last couple of years. We've seen a lot of things go very well. Not ideal, but we've seen a lot of things go very well. So what I'm hearing is, and, and I, again, I'm totally fine with this, we maybe look at someone who is an employee of the town, who reports to me, who integrates from a staff level with, with the golf advisory committee, which is also working well. Um, and I'll put that out first, and we'll see what happens from there.
Okay.
But I would like to do it in August, because actually, if we find out who that person is, and we could even have them work the tail end of the season to have some continuity and some overlap, if it's someone different, then that would be a real benefit to us as well. Like, if we knew in September who it was.
Okay.
And they were there for a month, I think that would be really beneficial.
All right, so Jeff, a, a complex court wants to add something there.
Thirteen years off and on. And thirteen years ago, we couldn't wait to get our hands away from the golf course. Now we're all excited about bringing the golf course back into the lap of the town, so.
It happens in flow, doesn't it?
Well, you know, from what we have seen last year, it was encouraging.
Yeah.
What we're seeing this year gives us great hope.
Yeah.
And so let's move in that direction.
Thirteen years ago, we had no hope, now it's moving in the right direction.
And I remember that perfectly, nine years ago was not so hot either.
Okay, I'll proceed along that line and let you know how it goes.
Thank you. All right, so that is the discussion on the golf course management. So next one is Heritage Week Activities Update. And I know that Councillor Silk would like to also add two bets worth. So Councillor Brown, if you want to go for it, and thank you for taking this task on.
So essentially, you just want me to report on how things are going?
Yeah, please help us to understand what, what's a go, what's not a go, from what the list we had, and Councillor Court, please add your two bets worth, too.
Perfect. We actually just met prior to this, so we're up to date and good to go. Um, hold on tight, here we go. So to start with, for the, we're still running with the theme, Egagamat, which is never give up, and it's to give hope. Um, and that is from, from the Blood Tribe. Um, we're looking at weekly activities. Um, there's only one that, none of these are set in stone for the record. Because of COVID, we've kind of learned that the stones kind of sand right now. So all of these pending AHS approval, pending, our numbers stay. I'm going to proceed with that in mind. So on the Friday, we're looking at doing the farmer's market outside. Um, a mitigation plan will be in hand for that. Um, Communities in Bloom with the Parks and Rec Board is doing the Yards of the Week. We've come up with some really fun, um, different themes that we're going to run with and then have prizes and be handed out. We have a Town Rock Treasure Hunt that, um, we are going to be putting out different rocks representing the different councillors, sorry, not representing a rock. But we're going to have.
Be on that rock.
Yeah, we're going to have different rocks put out there, and kids will take pictures with them, and if they get all of the councils, then they get a picture, then they get a prize. Or Candice Atwood is running with that in her capable hands, and Chris McTinnell.
Is she painting them?
No.
No.
Maybe, but.
You're painting your own.
I'm, I'm going to do the ones for councils, so be nice. So, um, and Chris McTinnell at Atkins is going to put some of them in her window and show them. So there's going to be different, different, um, prizes for different rocks. Anyway, too much rock talk. The next one is the pickleball court. A special thank you to Councillor Silk and his pickleball groupies that painted the court, um, today and did a fantastic job.
They were noticed.
Yes, and I think they need more paint, but we'll get to that. So we're looking at doing the softball, or sorry, we're looking at doing the pickleball, um, pickleball games, and Gib Shaffer is running with that. Councillor Silk, I'm sure, is helping. Uh, Ben Court is handling our, um, yeah, our softball, what did he call it?
Games?
No, it's the.
Softball League, um, family, yeah.
Mini, anyway, it's not a tournament. They're going to have, uh, games throughout the week, rather than cram them into two days. They're going to have different games on different weeks, having spacing, of course. Mitigation plan has to be in place with that. That's what we're looking at there. Um, Alan Klain is, and his group are doing the Vintage Car Drive, and they will be doing it Thursday, which is the sixth. And they will, Councillor Court is going to help them come up with a parade route. We're going to be stopping at, not we, not me, they. We'll be stopping at, um, the Chinook and Lee Crest. We want to try and involve the seniors in it, so that will be the Thursday. Um, we will, our hope is to have a drive-in movie out at the Aggerdome in the south-ish parking lot. Um, we're looking at renting a four-story, um, theater. It's very, it's, it's the same one that the Town of Raymond has used, and we would be, um, having an outdoor movie, everyone stays in their cars, and, um, that should be a lot of fun. That, again, will be the Friday night. Um, we're also looking at a flagpole raising at the monument, the epitaph, the what?
Senotaph.
Senotaph. Um, that will be, that will be the, um, that will be, sorry, the flag.
Blackfoot.
We're trying to find out what exact flag is the best one, whether it's the Blackfoot Confederacy, Confederacy flag. Yep, that. Or whether it is the Blood Tribe, uh, flag. We're finding out about that, what is the best. Um, Jeff is handling that. Um, we've also talked to the mayor and Dave Innis in regards to, David Innis, sorry, in regards to doing First Nation dancing. We're looking at, um, having that run from Monday to Saturday. And it would be two drummers, three dancers, and in different areas of the town, including the seniors and different villa throughout the town, um, once a day. And, um, they're, they've got a meeting tomorrow that they're looking at, and that is the powwow committee, is my understanding, that is looking at handling that. Um, we also, I also talked to Alex, and the golf course is doing their glow-in-the-dark golfing. And that, it looks like, is running the Friday. Um, and he's running with that. He's just getting the, he's getting the, um, advertising just ready to go for that. So then the Saturday, essentially, um, the big one is the parade. And we're going to say parade-ish because of AHS talking with them. Of course, we cannot do a normal parade. That's not reasonable, because it exceeds over the two hundred. So the Rotarians are still in negotiations, they meet again tomorrow. And that is Sharon Jensen. She's, that's been given to her and her, um, board to come up with family, or COVID-friendly, that just sounds wrong, but anyway, COVID-friendly parade. So they're trying to figure out how they're going to, whether it be backwards, I'm not sure, but they're, they're figuring it out. And they, of course, know that they will have to come up with a mitigation plan. Uh, businesses on Main Street, of course, will handle their own sidewalk sales. So then on the Saturday, we would have a parade-ish and the outdoor rodeo, the Aggerdome. Um, they're looking at doing Friday, Saturday. And again, they're looking at, uh, mitigation plan, they're looking at, um, what stipulations, if they can do any inside, um, and the ranch rodeo outside. They're handling all of that. We would finish the pickleball, finish the softball on the Saturday. Um, and then fireworks, the fireworks have been bought. The key here is where? Where can we do it so that we can keep people in their cars? We're looking at, um, a couple of different areas. Jeff is helping, is handling that. Um, but other than that, I got nothing.
One of the things, um, the museum is.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Is looking to do a town treasure hunt.
That's right.
Councillor Brown has been going crazy on this. She's been fantastic. I just want to give kudos to her. And to the people that she's talked to, they've been pretty good about volunteering and running these different things, so. She's done a lot of work on it, so way to go, councillor.
Yeah, I really want to thank you for what you did. You did it with much passion and desire to see it happen. It's wonderful.
The museum is actually having somebody from Raymond come on Thursday to tell how Raymond did it. So at 10 o'clock Thursday morning, I might pop over here and see what they got organized in there, so.
I think the key to this, and when Jeff and I went and we spoke to the Rotarians last Wednesday, the key to this Heritage Week, that we hope the public looks at it. We hope you don't compare it to, well, last year or five years ago.
We did.
We hope that you don't look, you don't compare oranges to apples.
Yeah.
Because this is different. We're having to think outside the box. We're doing our absolute best for this to be a community for both communities. The Reserve and Cardston, we want, we want togetherness, unity. And we really want a little bit of business brought to Cardston is always a good thing. So we're hoping that people stay home, come to it, and remember to social distance and be respectful of others. That's kind of our hope.
Thank you so much. There's something, when you talk about the parade. On 1st of July, I don't know how many of you had a chance to see the emergency department.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was great.
That was such a fantastic thing. It, it was such a wonderful idea. Maybe they want to do something like that, if they cannot do the regular. Councillor Silk, you wanted to add something?
Just a request from the pickleballers that are organizing the tournament. They were wondering if the town would be willing to spring for some windscreen at the tennis court because the wind never blows in Southern Alberta for more than 364 days of the year.
All right, Councillor Silk, do you want to give us an idea? You looked at cars, it seems to me.
One of the pickleballers approached me yesterday at the courts and said that he'd looked into it, and it was $4,700 for a windscreen, and they would put it up.
Okay, and so in conversation with you earlier on, you said that would cover the west side and the south side of the court, possibly. Am I correct?
Part of it.
Yeah, in the corner.
Yeah.
So he.
The idea behind it is that it's movable, so if we ever move the pickleball courts where we hope to in the future, the screen goes with it.
All right. So there is a certain amount of budget that is allocated to Heritage Week.
Let's talk about that.
I know, I know. So what we need to figure out is how much we have in a budget and how much expenses we intend to have at this point. And if there is some little bit of fudging factor there that could help the pickleballer. Because actually, the money doesn't grow on trees, but there might be a load of trees that we can pick.
So.
The question arises, Jeff, this is, this isn't Heritage Week situation with the windscreen. This is gonna be a permanent windscreen as long as the pickleball courts are there. So is there a community enhancement grant that we could apply for or something like that?
It's a little late.
Well, no, but if we knew we had something coming, because it's, it's applied to the recreation of our community. It's not a, it's not a Heritage Week finance thing. I mean, it, it's not a yearly thing.
No, I understand what you're saying, but right now, if we have to find some money.
Yeah.
That is going to be spent for Heritage Week, it's not a bad thing to try to figure out if there's a few thousand dollars somewhere.
I can have a look to see if we could, some grants don't let you do, apply and get funded retroactively. Like, you can't commence the project, but I'm assuming like New Horizons for seniors, if we can take an assumption that everyone's Councillor South aging up. Then it may fit.
You're saying it's a teenager's turn.
You're just a spring chicken.
So we could, we could have a quick look and see if there's anything that we could get compensated for after the fact. It limits us.
Right.
All right, are we okay with that? Thank you for all the work, Councillor Brown and Councillor Silk. Do you want to add something to it?
Please, just before we end this. So I'm gonna say that number was probably, I don't know, I can talk to Jeff about where that number came from and whether they want to do their own internal research on that. The other question that was put to me by the pickleballers was, you said they had 200 bucks. Their question was, well, 100 bucks of that's gonna go to hand sanitizer. Can you, is there hand sanitizer that's provided in a 45-gallon drum that they don't have to use their 200-dollar budget?
Absolutely. We'll just dip them. Yep.
They don't have to use their 200-dollar.
We'll talk to our people.
Good.
There you go. Councillor Brown, do you want to carry on?
Sure. So the budget that we were given for Heritage Week is $36,100. And I know you're gasping and you're thinking, wow, she can do a lot of shopping for that, but we're, what we've come up with, stop. What we've come up with, it looks like it's going to be right in there. Do we have an extra 5,000? I don't know if we do. It depends on a couple things. But, so that is a worrisome to me, to come out of this budget that I've been given, the 36,100. Well, not that I've been given, but has been allotted for Heritage Week. So do I have an extra? Hmm, maybe some, but I don't think I would have it all. Because I think the $36,100 are going to be spent.
Okay. So Jeff?
You have council-approved operating cash. If you think it's something that's important and a priority for us, we could, we could do everything we can with the budget, and anything above and beyond could potentially come out of your council-approved operating. You have $50,000.
There you go.
Okay, so it seems to me as we can never regulate the wind. Maybe we ought to make a decision now rather than later. So Councillor Silk, do you want to go for it?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we, and Jeff, I don't wanna, can I, I don't know that I can put a dollar figure on until your guys do their research. That we take money out of council-approved operating for the purchase of a windscreen for the tennis courts/pickleball courts.
I won't let them spend all 50,000.
Yeah, no.
No. Okay, do you want to say that?
You got that, Jim?
Was the first money to come from Heritage Week?
Yeah, we'll do everything we can with that Heritage Week budget. The difference will pull from, I'll bring you a resolution for the exact amount from council-approved operating.
All right, so fair enough. So that will be, okay. So questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. So make your pickleballer happy today.
Mayor, so I guess I just, my question, back to what we were talking about. Was there anything else council had wanted me to add to Heritage Week or?
I think you have a week that is so loaded. It looks good. The, the thing that I think we need to wait for now is all the protocols.
Agreed.
To be able to allow those activities to happen.
Right.
Once we have those protocols, then I think we can start to formalize an agenda.
I would just ask that if the public's talking, do you keep the expectations of a parade very mitigated right now? That doesn't look good.
Agreed.
So just make sure the expectations are somewhat managed there.
But I think also it's really important in all of our advertising that is coming. And everyone that is involved with us has been told in any form of advertising, it's pending, pending COVID. So everyone is aware. They're not, I mean, of course, we're gonna be heartbroken if we have to cancel things, but realistically, we need to assume, right? But we still have to continue to plan.
And we also have to figure out the Plan B, where is the weather?
Yeah, it'll be fine.
In nine years, we have done quite well, I would say. There's only one, one year that we had a drizzle, not even a sick rain, so that was great. Okay, so is that satisfactory? Did we?
You voted.
We vote?
Yeah.
So that's fine. Thanks. All right. Any information that you want to have regarding 7D Sergeant Wright? I think Sergeant Wright is, is a welcome addition to the RCMP in our detachment. He is extremely well-trained and has a very vast amount of knowledge and abilities that I'm sure are going to be great for our community. And we wish our former sergeant well. So with Mr. Atkins, what?
We'll put that on September 22nd.
Yeah, I was going to say, do you have anything else that you want Jeff to look at? No, okay. All right, so, right, a little bit late, Josh, but thank you so much for being there. We need to finish a little bit of correspondence and then we'll go, and committee reports, and then we'll go in a closed session, okay? If you don't mind waiting a few more minutes. Thank you, all right. So the committee reports, as you could see, there were a couple of them, the library. I'm not so sure, Councillor Brown, regarding the motion that they asked you to remove. It was regarding wages for some of the workers. Can you help me understand what it was all about?
I'm trying to remember that myself.
Does you two?
We, we're trying to follow the town's protocol with the wages, but also remembering that the province changed the $15.
Okay.
And lowered it for students.
Okay.
So where we're at is that any new hiring will be at that new student level, I think it's $13. But the ones that we had already hired that are getting that other wage, we can't very well roll it back. So any new hirings.
Okay.
Will go under the new wage scale.
Okay.
And, and with the senior employees, we'll follow the town grid.
All right, so.
That's where that's at.
I just was curious to know what it was all about. Thanks.
Okay.
Any question regarding some reports? No? All right, so let's move on to 8B, the Peace Officer Report. It's maybe not exactly what you asked as a council. You wanted to have a little bit more information regarding.
That's starting in July. We had this discussion the end of June, so this is a June report.
Okay, so that's fine, so.
It's coming forward, yeah.
Add in some stuff about.
Right, you asked to have more detail regarding at the outcomes of those food patrols. That's what you were asking.
And, you know, just so you know, as a business owner, I, we have noticed a difference on Main Street with what Sean and the RCMP are doing, so.
So thank you so much. It's, it's good to know. CEO report, as you could see, Jeff was not busy again.
He wasn't busy at all. What are you gonna do with your time?
Okay, Jeff, Jeff, it's, it's good to know you're working that hard, but once in a while, take some time for yourself and your family. It'll be very soon fall in between, do something.
Go thin down your horses.
So thank you so much for all you do.
Yeah, for the walking trails.
So you have a financial report. As you could see, the financial report, if I remember, it says at the end of May. It's May 31st. Am I correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, all right. So don't kind of look at it and thinking, okay, what happened with the taxes and all that? Well, next, next time you have an update, you will have a better understanding and how much taxes we collected and how many have deferred them for, as per the bylaw we passed. So we need to wait to see.
I was wondering, in regards to the budgeting here, and maybe this is not the right place, but to ask the question, but how is the pool going?
Oh, that's not inside there.
That's, kinda wanted to know where that's going.
I actually brought some stuff for you, Councillor.
Okay.
So just really quickly, it's a little early to tell you how it's going. Our revenues, I think we might be at 30,000 or 40,000 bucks. They're not, they're not over the top. But again, our capacity is less than half than normal.
Yeah.
Right, so there's that. We, I asked Doug and Randy to redo the budget based on their projections of the season. And so their projection, and this includes the repair bill from Acapulco when they came out, so that's an anomaly that was thrown in. But it looks like we can reduce the deficit on that from our mil rate budget at about $48,000 less than what we budgeted at mil rate time. So they're projecting that the deficit will come in about 48 grand under that, which is good news.
Yeah.
So we'll watch this, we've kind of done our own projected budget now, given when we opened and the conditions that we opened. So we'll keep an eye on that as we go along, but we'll mitigate the loss to some degree.
Well, that's good news.
That was my concern.
Thank you. Thanks for the question. All right, so 8E, you have a spreadsheet regarding the major project report and how far they have been completed. So that's for your information. It's always there for your information if you have questions.
Just a quick one. Do you have any idea on the Spray Park when it might be done?
Actually, we've, they've, the Rotarians, I should say, have been dealing a lot with it, but the, because of COVID, we can't get any of the equipment. None of the features, the apparatus is not shipping.
Okay.
So I don't know where they are in this world. Remember, the water slide sat in a port in Turkey for months? I don't know where the Spray Park stuff is.
Does anybody know?
Oh, yeah, the supplier knows. They just know that they're not getting any of their stuff as they had hoped.
So it's going to be a lingering project?
They're waiting for all the equipment.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
So we don't have to worry about opening this year.
Jeff, the next one is yours again, sorry. Is the Emergency Coordinators Center, the COVID, the update?
Same meetings.
I know you still have meetings with the different partners that we have. Help us a little.
Yeah, I'll be fairly quick with it. We had our health and government sector meetings today. The health meeting was quite good. Regionally, there is concerns in the region. Our numbers are on the uptick as a region. So I think the only community now is Crowsnest Pass and Waterton that don't have confirmed cases. There's great concern for Hutterite colonies in the whole region.
Yeah.
That's a big concern. And so what, what the concern from AHS is right now, that our family and friends gatherings are not, we are not social distancing at family gatherings. We're just not. And that's causing all, the, what's the word? The contact spread is what, is what's really getting us right now is. Community spread, thank you. And so they're very concerned about that. The provincial government, AHS, is working closely with our colonies in the region, and they have good mitigation plans in place. But the, simply the way of life there contributes to spread. That's just how it works. So they're really battling that. So there is a general level of concern by AHS. They're cautioning us all quite a bit on things like community activities and exposing our seniors particularly. So we had a good meeting. We're seeing, you know, our hospitals, our care facilities, our support services are starting to reopen and offer more services. And that's being done very cautiously still, so that's not moving along as quickly as some people would like. For example, if you had a relative in the long-term care at the hospital, you still could not visit them.
No.
And, and I can understand 100% why that's difficult. I can, I would be beside myself if I had a close relative in a long-term care. I would be just really upset about that. So there's a lot of managing both mental health of the individual and the mental health of the families has been a real challenge. So they're just asking us to stay the course. Our messaging this upcoming week will be related to visiting friends and family gatherings and maintaining social distancing. They do have some concerns about sports teams, sports groups, but that seems to be reasonably mitigated, but still a concern. We had a bit of a, let's call it a higher-profile concern in the community with COVID spread last week. We did things like we, we didn't have men's league softball last week. We have three staff currently on 14-day quarantine that won't be at work until a week from Thursday. But their tests are all negative, so we're okay there. The, the spread didn't occur as was feared, so there wasn't a spread there. But those things all of a sudden bring it back to priority when you kind of get complacent. And now all of a sudden, it's in the front of your mind again, so. By and large, everything's still okay, but just being very cautious right now and really encourage people. Oh, I should also mention, we are scheduled to get any day here. It's supposed to be this week, 12,000 masks from Alberta Health Services, and they've asked us to distribute them. We'll be partnering with the clinic, who's going to be doing a campaign on wearing masks when you're in public, so they're gonna start promoting that. And so we're going to partner with them. I met with Ron Johnson yesterday about this, and they'll be saying that they can get the masks from the town and that we'll have areas of distribution, so.
Like the N W.
Well, N W's doing it now. We're probably gonna set up a little. Well, NW's doing it now. We're probably going to set up a little table at the post office clinic area, for example. We're going to give a bagged mask to the RCMP, to the peace officer, to the fire department. They're all going to have them. Uh, the county's getting a 20,000 masks and we're getting 12. And so between us, we'll set up some distribution for those. Uh, we also had a, a donation, a reasonably significant donation to purchase additional masks for seniors from a resident. An anonymous donation, so we have $1,000 to purchase additional masks. Um, we're going to see how this inventory goes and then we'll go from there. So a few things going on like that, and we're meeting every other week now with those, uh, the health and the government sector. It seems like that's sufficient unless there's a major change. Then we'll look at getting something together quicker, but other than that, that's what we're up to.
That's good. Thank you. All right, so the next thing, questions? Do you have any question for Jeff? No? All right. So the correspondence, as you could see, we have uh the Alberta Care Conference. Now, that one is an interesting conference. But I don't know that anyone.
I'm surprised they're trying to have it.
Yeah.
Will go to something like that.
It's September, isn't it? Yeah.
But I mean, I don't have uh really any planned medication against COVID at this time, so I don't know. Tanya, Tanya Song, AUMA, uh, we talked about that earlier. And Minister Casey Madu, notice of funding that we already have spent. So it's very kind.
Another one of those after the fact.
Go ahead.
It's referencing to additional funds, Jeff, like for these shovel-ready projects.
Yeah.
It's the middle of July. Is he want the shovels in the ground at Christmas time or what? Because like either give the friggin' money or don't.
That's a very good point, but the government being what it is.
Yeah.
Is slow.
It's interesting because I had a meeting with Murray Milward this morning on something else and, and we were just wrapping up. I said, Murray, I just want to bounce something off you. I said, I keep hearing about. 50 million here and 500 million here, and we submitted our shovel-ready projects about two months ago. Did I miss the application? Like, just tell me straight up, did you apply? And he goes, no, I've been asking the same question. He says, we haven't figured out how they're distributing it. So I thought I was maybe in the dark and I've been trying to keep up on it, but he confirmed that, no, we, he too is asking the exact same question. You keep announcing. All this funding, but no one's aware of how to access it.
Raymond, Raymond got the letter.
Yeah, maybe. So we're keeping, I just felt better that it wasn't just me. That's, to be very honest. I was worried it was just me, if it wasn't.
Since you have the opportunity to talk to Joseph Scott tomorrow, Emily Scott tomorrow, could you maybe, as an extra?
Okay.
Ask him that question? He might have something to tell you.
That is not clear yet.
No, okay, all right, thank you. Well, this ends the meeting of the council for the day. And so we need to have a motion and to go in closed session. Thank you. Are in favor? Thank you very much. So thank you to our media.